So it's in the last further resolve that we need to be edited. Or wait a second, hold on. I guess we need a new further resolved. Is that how you would read that Steve? Or Mia?
I think we need a new one. The last one talks about just returning it, but I think we need a new one.
Yeah, it would. I think it would go above that one, at least.
I was gonna suggest the same.
That the Board of Trustees directs. Staff to implement the State Bar of California policy on removal of blah, 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 that that whole thing from there as related to administrative suspensions. Only or something like that. And then what what needs to be changed in the last result?
Perhaps with the remainder of the policy.
Back to return.
With the remainder.
Instead of a proposed, it says a revised state bar policy. Maybe you could just say a revised following the Supreme Court's final action on nine point three, three. Then it's clear it's about revisions pursuant to whatever the court did on nine point three, three.
Right, Stephen Mia, any other language that you can foresee?
Uh, no, I I think the direction from the clear based on that, I would just point out that this will require some IT development in order to remove those administrative inaction in inactive enrollments and administrative suspensions. It's it's not something that we can just do immediately, but we will move this forward with all speed of the as long as we have the resources.
Got it. Understood. All right, trustee. Good. Are these friendly amendments to your original motion?
Yes, thank you.
And then trustee Buena Ventura?
Yes.
All right, any other comments? Before I go to a roll call vote.
I see.
Uh, trustee Stevens?
Yeah, I just I I did want to point out that the way that the rule is drafted and what we had discussed last time. It is limited to one time relief for the expungement and the 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 licensee can't have disciplinary matters pending. So so to to your concern, a trustee Tony, I think it goes to that and the expungement itself will go through an analysis about whether it's warranted under the circumstances. And we talked about that at the last meeting as well. So it this isn't a shotgun blast like some folks may have appeared to think in the public comments that we got back. That said, I do think that as we put this forward to the Supreme Court, it probably will be helpful to address so some of the right, the fact of those comments, because they do, they do stand out. I mean, and it is, it is a legitimate basis, and I think we have to assume somebody else is going to be concerned about that.
All right, uh, Chief Trial Counsel Cardona.
Um, just for the resolution, I think it needs to read, implement the State Bar of California policy on removal of public discipline and administrative suspensions from the attorney profile page, so that you're referring to the full title of the policy. As related to administrative suspensions, and it is, and then I think it works.
It it needs to be written the way it is in the last
Right.
Luisa with the all caps, because it's the title of the document.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, can I make another suggestion? I think it may need to also say the Board of Trustees adopts that and then directs the implementation to make it clear that that the intent is to adopt the policy components and implement those components pertaining to the administrative suspensions, because we currently do not have adopted policy.
So so I think if it's clear that it's but just adoption and direction of implementation as it relates to administrative suspensions.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, any other weigh-ins from staff on appropriate language before I go back to trustee good and Buena Ventura? All right, trustee good, are those friendly amendments?
Yes.
Trustee Buena Ventura, friendly amendments?
Yeah.
All right. Any other comments on this, or may I call for a roll call vote? Okay, seeing none, if I get a roll call vote, please.
Vera Hona?
I am.
Buena Ventura?
I.
Sisneros?
I.
Good?
I.
Grande?
I.
Huser?
I.
So well?
I'm a no.
Stevens?
I.
Tony?
Nay.
Trejo not present, Stallings?
I.
That's eight eyes, two nose, the motion carries.
All right, Stephen Mia, thank you for your work on this, George, for your expertise and to uh, the vigorous debate, both sides, I think, really, uh, made some excellent points. I really appreciate the work of this board and really wrestling with some of these uh, these tough issues. So thank you to all on that. We'll go on next to uh, item six point two, which is approval of recommendations from the Lawyer Assistance Oversight Committee regarding the Alternative Discipline Program. And this item is being presented by Special Counsel Bridget Grammy. So welcome for the first time.
Thank you. I know it's been a long day. Um, good afternoon, so I will be sharing my screen. Okay. Please see my screen, okay?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So this is another one of these items about the Ad-Hoc Commission on the Discipline System. This one has to do with the recommendation about the Alternative Discipline Program recommendations. Um, and so let me just move on here. So with respect to this recommendation that the Ad-Hoc Commission made, um, they they recommended that we look into the rules involving the eligibility for the Alternative Discipline Program, particularly the rule that prohibits eligibility for respondents charged with misconduct involving moral turpitude that has resulted in significant harm to clients or the administration of justice. And the board, uh, it back in twenty twenty-three, last year, the board tasked the Lawyer Assistance Program Oversight Committee to work on this um, recommendation to study it more and to work with stakeholders, particularly um, the the Discipline Council, the Office of Chief Trial Counsel and the State Bar Court to get more information about their perspectives on on the rules and about the program, and also to consider the demographic data about the participants, um, the recidivism data and best practices in other settings, including collaborative courts. Uh, just a brief overview for those of you that are not familiar with what the program is. Um, the ADP program is managed by the State Bar Court, and the participants are attorneys who are already in the discipline system. Um, they have a substance use or mental health issue that was causally contributing to the misconduct for which they're being disciplined. They have to meet eligibility rules and um, they have to stipulate to facts and conclusions of law in order to enter into the program. And then once they're accepted, they have to participate in in our lawyer assistance program or lab and meet other court order conditions. Um, and the way it works is if they are successful in going through the program, then they can have a lower level of discipline imposed. If they are unsuccessful, it's a higher level of discipline. So the uh, the Oversight Committee broke up into groups. They talked to various stakeholders, and here's some themes that came out. Um, some of the ineligibility rules negatively impacted uh, program participation. Uh, some some stakeholders reported that the stipulation requirement is a barrier to participating, that many respondents did not want to um, to stipulate to all of the facts, especially the moral turpitude misconduct eligibility requirement that might be um, preventing them from joining the the program. Um, we did also find, and I'll go through this in a minute, that the ADP participants do recidivate at higher rates than the general um, population of attorneys that are in the discipline system. Um, and we've also learned that there is a lot of data we don't we don't have in order to really analyze deeper, particularly that recidivism data. Um, okay, right. Okay, so this is the one, this is the rule that they uh, that the Ad-Hoc Commission really wanted us to focus on, and it really was the focus of most of the stakeholder discussions as well. Um, this particular part of the rule, an attorney will not be accepted to participate in the program if their current misconduct involves acts of moral turpitude, dishonesty, or corruption that has resulted in significant harm to one or more clients or to the administration of justice. This was the the rule that is at issue. And and just to give you a little bit of history, and of course, you know, thanks to Melanie Lawrence, particularly, she really took a lot of time to put together a whole history for you in our board item. I won't go through all of that. Um, but something that is important to keep in mind is that this particular eligibility rule did not come into play until two thousand eight. The program was established in two thousand three, and it didn't really have any particular eligibility requirements. But after the Supreme Court had some issues with um, the way that the program was running, they they added that the the board voted to add this particular requirement as a way to, you know, limit the numbers of people that were take being able to be admitted into the program. So I raised that because this chart is interesting as far as the numbers of attorneys that were participating in the program. Um, you know, here the years prior to the imposition of this rule, including the year that it was imposed. And then you can see it declined pretty dramatically in two thousand nine after this rule was implemented. And the numbers have remained about there in the past five years, and now even this year, as of October first, uh, there are eight attorneys that are enrolled in the program now. Now, there are probably there are other factors, but this is just an is an interesting data point. Um, some other, this is the recidivism data I wanted to point out. So as you know, we there are different ways to measure what recidivism means. Um, one way is just by looking at new complaints filed after somebody has done with the with the program or released from probation or the or um, the discipline system. In this first side about receiving a new complaint, you can see that the ADP program participants are pretty similar to the other programs. People on probation, agreements in lieu of discipline or approvals as far as recidivists, recidivating numbers. But if you look at the recidivism based on um, when a new investigation is launched, not just a complaint filed, you can see that the ADP numbers are pretty are significantly higher than the other um, categories of respondents. And this causes to staff, and this was something that was directly um, uh, something that the board wanted us to look at, look into, and we're looking at this rule. Um, this is something that we think is very important. We need to understand more about why why the participants in the ADP program are recidivating at the at this level. Okay, so the the Oversight Committee, again, in and you have this in your material, they did a significant amount of work for about a year. They put together some comprehensive recommendations with respect to many of their roles, not just the moral turpitude. But on this moral turpitude rule, um, they really, they presented for the board, they wanted to present to you three different options um, with respect to that rule. The first one is to just get rid of the entire subdivision in general about moral turpitude, dishonesty, or corruption. The second option was to just strike moral turpitude, but leave the rest of the um, eligibility requirements with with respect to dishonesty or corruption in the rule. Um, or the third one would be, uh, as you can see here, it would say, strike only moral turpitude and add to dishonesty or corruption acts that have resulted or would have expected to result in significant harm. Um, that one was because just because something actually did cause harm. Um, they didn't, they, you know, they wanted to add some additional um, guardrails there. Uh, we did, we did take these back to stakeholders again, talk to this to the State Bar Court and also Office of Chief Trial Counsel and um, the Association of Disciplinary Counsel about their suggestions. Um, the State Bar Court was supportive of the first option, which was to, here, I'll go back so you can see it, um, to strike to strike the whole thing. Um, and OCTC was also, you know, supportive of that, but with some additional guardrails, perhaps adding on the um, some some sanctions, specific sanctions for people that were would have been in that category. Um, staff is recommending, however, that we go with the second option, which is to strike moral turpitude and leave the rest for now. And the reason why is because of the recidivism data. I think we really need to understand more about why this particular population is um, recidivating at a higher rate and also looking historically at the reasons that the court imposed, you know, recommended that this additional eligibility requirement be imposed to begin with, because there were too many people in the program or it was being perceived as being taken advantage of. Um, and so what we're staff is recommending that the board adopt the second option and then direct staff to gather more information going forward and some more data from the from the participants that are in the program, so we can better understand why that recidivism is happening. Um, okay, and then just very briefly, there are a few, there were other recommendations that um, the Oversight Committee made with respect to the stipulations. As I mentioned, some respondents believe that they don't want to, um, they don't want to stipulate to all of the facts and that they're, you know, they want the ability to submit evidence. The State Bar Court has, you know, has responded to that with concerns about extending the time that it will take to go through all these different additional proceedings. So at the moment, um, we are recommending, and I will show you the resolutions in a minute. Um, but that with respect to the these, all of these rules that we that the board refer them to the Bench Bar Committee of the State Bar Court, which does include all of these um, stakeholders and allow them to kind of work at work together more collaboratively on some potential rule and that rule amendments that would address these particular issues. And finally, with respect to the collaborative courts, they did look into this. This is a model that's being used like the drug court model in the criminal context. Um, the committee just is recommending that we not move forward with this recommendation at this time, that there's not enough information. But again, that we continue to collect and study data um, related to ADP and understand, you know, some of the parameters before we would move into um, really changing the entire model of the program. So uh, we can put the resolutions up, Devon, but they're they're really just, as I mentioned, to um, refer to the Bench Bar Committee to come back to the board with with some proposed rules that the stakeholders have agreed upon um, with some specific direction, as I talked about, uh, regarding the moral turpitude language. And then to direct staff to begin collecting and analyzing the data regarding ADP participants. But I think we're, I'm happy to take any questions, and then we can put the resolutions up.
All right, thank you for that. The good Sisneros room.
Sorry, keep asking a lot of questions here. Um, Ms. Grammy, I had a question about the recid- recidivism rates really disturbed me. And I had a question about that slide, and it may just be that I'm not uh, understanding this well. But I know um, there's a a chart of getting a new complaint, which means just an alleged complaint, right, not proven.
Right.
And then, you know, sometimes complaints never make it to the investigation phase, right? And then you're looking at the investigation phase and the investigation is launched. Um, and that's where the number skyrockets. Did we actually take it one step further and look at um, uh, folks where actually discipline was imposed? Um, or am I not thinking about this correctly um, in terms of how the disciplinary system works?
You are thinking about it correctly, and I do not have that in front of me, but we can definitely get it. Um, because that that you're right, there are those kind of three different measures of of recidivism. Um, so I unfortunately, I don't have that at my fingertips, but I do um, understand what you're saying, and we can definitely look into that further.
I mean, does that information look more like the new investigation launch chart? Or like the receive the new complaint chart?
Yes, that is a great question. Let me see if I can, while while we continue to answer the question, I'll see if I can, if anybody has pulled that information, I can.
Okay, and then another question just about these charts was, uh, what time period did you look at?
Um, good, yeah, let me see if I can get that.
Or it might be the time period above, but I just want a clarification on how many years you looked at, because this calculation is very small, you know, right?
Of of the number of participants in general, you mean?
Yeah, and I wondered like, was this from two thousand and five to present, or was it, you know, I just wanted to know what the the uh, bar chart was from?
Yes, that's a good, let me, let me just look back as I'll continue to take some questions, and then I can um, check that information.
And then my final question was, I understand what staff's recommendation is, and I wondered what Mr. Cardona's recommendation would be. Uh, or OCTC, what is that exactly? Thank you.
Sure. Um, I I don't know if George is listening. He wants to win for himself. I know what he they had recommended would would be that we would add a particular um, defined sanction in there. So even if we removed the um, the uh, moral turpitude requirement, you would still have some kind of, uh, here's George, I think he's here to explain himself. There you go, George.
So we actually recommended a package of changes to kind of take a different approach based on our experience, which would have eliminated um, the eligibility for uh, moral turpitude, dishonesty, or corruption. Um, kept the stipulation procedures in place, imposed time limits on the process for putting people into ADP based on our experience that it has often caused massive delays in in working out whether someone can be an ADP or not. Um, but at the same time, for those types of offenses, um, impose a minimum sanction if they're accepted into ADP. So in other words, we're broadening the eligibility criteria, but recognizing that for the more serious offenses, we're then going to impose a minimum sanction, even if they successfully complete ADP. Um, um, and also make some other changes in terms of um, how the court goes about making eligibility determinations. And finally, um, leaving the court with discretion, even if someone is eligible to look at the overall um, facts and say, look, there's no point in ADP, because even if they successfully completed, I'm going to disbar them. Um, so that was an overall package we proposed. I will note that um, you know, the directions that staff is proposing, I don't think would preclude um, the Bench Bar Committee from considering those types of options and coming back with them as a recommendation. Um, other than the option two, um, if the direction is to stick to that and only eliminate moral turpitude, we could still work around that and come back with a package um, for the for the board's consideration, and the board could always reconsider that. So um, I think the directions that they're asking the board to give would be consistent with allowing us to all go back and kind of talk amongst ourselves and think about these various options and come back with some recommendations, bearing in mind the the directions the board is giving.
Thank you, George, and I think that's right. I think that is why we ultimately made the recommendation that we refer it to Bench Bar, because it does seem like there are ground, there can be some common ground with respect to the different stakeholders and um, something that those that group can work out and come back to the board with.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
And trustee good, I apologize, I just don't have that information right with me, but we can definitely follow up with you. I think it's really important um, as we move forward to make our final recommendations on the rule changes to understand that nuance.
All right, anything else? Were you putting the resolution up on the screen? Oh, there you go.
Okay, so yeah, there's four of them here as just kind of briefly summary summarizing them. One has to do with gathering more data, um, particularly so that we can understand more about that recidivism data. Um, the second one is to refer this to the Bench Bar Committee and to come back to the board with some proposed rules in the May at its May meeting. And then um, the last two are the more specific direction with respect to moral turpitude and option two is staff's recommendation. Um, and then the direction OCTC's approach of um, we eliminated that we set a minimum disciplinary stat sanction for offenses that would be in this category.
All right, any questions from any of the trustees about this resolution, any other discussion, if not, may I have a motion?
So moved?
All right, was that trustee Buena Ventura?
Stevens?
Oh, sorry, my apologies. Trustee Stevens with the first.
Second.
All right, trustee trustee Grande with the second. Unless there's any further discussion, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vera Hona, not present, Buena Ventura?
I.
Sisneros?
I.
Good?
I.
Grande?
I.
Huser?
I.
So well?
I.
Stevens?
I.
Tony?
I.
Trejo not present, Stallings?
I.
Nine eyes, zero nays, motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Grammy. Don't go anywhere, because we have six point three update from the Office of Admissions, and this is being presented by Special Counsel Ms. Grammy.
Thank you. Okay, here I am again. Okay, um, so we just wanted to give you an update. There's a lot happening in the Office of Admissions, particularly with respect to the bar exam, as you all know, and you heard um, this morning in one of the public commenters talking about the experiment. So I I'm going to structure this update with a past, present, and future theme. And I'm happy to take any questions as as I go, so feel free to interrupt. So the past, we just released our bar exam results, as you probably saw a week ago on the on November eighth um, from the July exam. And we had a higher pass rate than um, we have in the past couple of years. It was a fifty-three percent overall pass rate. Um, eight thousand two hundred ninety-one applicants took the exam and four thousand four hundred fifty-eight passed. Sixty-eight point two percent for the first time takers and twenty-three point five percent for repeat takers. Um, though that was the past, in the present, we just administered the experiment that we had been previewing for you. Um, last week, it was Friday and Saturday, using the Measure Learning Platform for online and in-person task taking. Um, there are forty-nine questions that were happening, questions we field tested, and we'll be using that data and information to help refine the questions for the February bar exam. Um, and then on October twenty-second, the court um, did approve a a proposed grading incentive on the bar exam itself for individuals that met a particular performance threshold of on the experiment. Um, and uh, the amount of points that the applicants will be awarded will be determined by the Committee of Bar Examiners and after a psychometric analysis, once they see the data from the experiment. Um, but the court did approve adding this incentive to applicants for either the February or the July bar exam, whichever is their first attempt. Um, so that generated a lot of interest. We had approximately fourth, and we're still getting all of the data, but it it looks like about thirty-seven hundred people completed the exam. Um, and of those, about thirty-four hundred online and three hundred in person. Um, and of those, about thirty-four hundred online and three hundred in person at the test centers, um, for, for measure learning. Um, uh, you know, I'm, I was happy to hear the comments from, um, one of the commenters this morning, that it was a good experience for him. Um, we did have, you know, overall, I think it, it went well, but we did have a number of technical issues that we are still kind of working through to understand. Um, there were some, uh, some number of, of applicants that were not able to take it. And we're still trying, we're, we're guessing that's about possibly, could be up to seven percent of the total people that took the, took the exam were not able to take it. So we're trying to understand who they are, reach out to them and figure out, um, what we can do. But we're, but measure learning is still currently, you know, giving us some reports and breaking down the information about what the different issues were. The good news is, I think a lot, most of them were resolved, and that it is all informing us about how we can be streamlined. It's a big reason why we're doing this experiment in the first place, to understand what the technology issues, um, can be and make sure we have all the procedures in place, that the students are adequately prepared and do some mandatory pre-testing in advance of the, of the actual test, bar exam test, so that everybody's ready to go. Um, there was also a comment about testing accommodation, so I did want to assure the board, we did have a separate testing accommodations, um, process for anyone that registered for the, uh, experiment. Uh, we received a total of four hundred and ninety-seven applications for accommodations. We granted four hundred and twenty-three. Twenty of them were partially granted, seventeen of them were denied, and, uh, thirty-seven were incomplete or people withdrew or didn't mean to request them. So that's kind of the breakdown of testing accommodations, but we did go through our usual process for, uh, for that. Um, any question, uh, we're, we're going to be sending out a survey, um, next week, so we're being very specific about what kind of technology issues people had, any other information, you know, getting feedback about the questions themselves, so that we can use all of that information to inform us as we move forward with the bar exam, but we haven't received those uh, responses yet, and we can share that with the board. And does anyone have any questions about the experiment before I move on?
Okay, looking around, seeing none.
Okay, okay, so the, the next step here is for the February exam. So as you all know, Kaplan has been writing our questions. We will be taking the information that we learned from the experiment to help refine them. Um, but they have been providing questions pursuant to our contract on a rolling basis. We have, our team have been working really, really hard. Um, we've convened a content validation team, so they are uh, again, meeting very regularly, looking at the questions, making sure that they are appropriately testing what needs to be tested. Um, and turning those around, finalizing those questions with Kaplan as we're building up our bank. Um, and then we also, Kaplan has provided for us, as promised, a faculty guide with full explanation, sample questions. We also have sample questions for test takers, for students, so those are available now. Um, and the plan is to move forward in February with measure learning in the same format online, um, and also in-person test take, test centers. Okay, and then just the longer term future. So on October tenth, the court issued a, an order, um, with a few modifications, but granting the Blue Ribbon Commission's recommendation that we develop an entirely new California-specific bar exam. Um, the court's order will specify twelve different topics that will be on the exam, um, seven, and then seven particular skills that will be tested. Um, with a, with a recommendation that we de-emphasize the need for memorization and more assess this, you know, focus on, um, assessment of skills. The court order also specifically recommended that we folk look at innovative technologies as we're looking at this, A I, different ways that we can, um, you know, administer this test. So this is going to require quite a bit of planning, as you can imagine, and the Committee of Bar Examiners will be meeting on December sixth, and we will be talking then about just kind of formulating a plan for convening different subject matter experts and what the timeline will look like for developing that exam. So those are my, that's my update. Any questions?
You guys have been busy, for sure. All right, any questions? Understatement of the year.
Yeah.
All right, any questions? Comments?
I, I wanted to just highlight that one of the things that's come up in some, some of my individual check-ins with trustees, and certainly we've been talking about it internally, is clarifying the role of the board, the Committee of Bar Examiners, and Supreme Court, particularly when we're talking about the new, whole new bar exam, which we have to give a, a better title to, um. And so we are working on that. I know O G C is working on it from a legal side. Um, and then we obviously need to work on it from a relationship side with the C B E and our Supreme Court liaison, so everybody's really clear about what needs to get approved by who. Um, there are so many decisions that will need to be made with respect to that new exam, including its overall form, the delivery, the way in which the exam is going to be delivered. Um, and the content, obviously. So, uh, we're working on that. I want to assure the board, and we'll use these, um, standing items on the board's agenda as an opportunity to update the entire board all at once about what's going on. And then, of course, we have our admissions liaison, um, trustee Stevens, that will be getting looped in on a more frequent basis.
Sounds like a plan. Okay, if not, oh yes, trustee Huser.
I was just gonna say, I mean, I was the one probably that raised some of those issues. I'm, I'm surprised that the original concept was the Committee of Bar Examiners without, you know, some sort of review or oversight, or, you know, maybe even going so far as approval, um, could make decisions like on the scoring and things like that. And so I, I do have some concern that, you know, the admission of students, um, or, you know, practitioners to the bar is one of the primary things that I would think the State Bar Board of Trustees would have some oversight over. And so I asked, um, it was already being done, but I asked that it be further reviewed, because I think it is concerning. Um, if the concept is that, you know, it doesn't require us to get involved.
I know we are continuing, we have done that, and we'll continue to work on that.
All right, looking around the screen, I see no further hands raised. So, Ms. Grammy, thank you so much for all of your work on this.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
All right. Uh, next we have a presentation under six point four. This is a discussion regarding the twenty twenty-five board planning session. We have Donna Herschewitz, our Chief Mission Officer and Legislative Director, presenting on this. Welcome, Donna.
Good afternoon. Um, let me share my screen here. Okay, I think you're seeing my presentation now.
Yes.
There we go. Um, so every year, um, this, so it's, I know, I understand it's four seventeen, but this item is intended for a lively discussion. Um, so I will do my best to energize all of you as we are going through this. Um, as you know, every year after the five-year strategic plan is adopted, the board conducts a planning session, the, uh, for twenty twenty-five, it'll be in February, and to help identify activities that the state bar should engage in, to advance the goals of the strategic plan and to meet our mission. Um, it's also an opportunity for the board to revise the strategic plan if it deems that necessary. Um, the goal of today's staff report is to elicit from you your thoughts, um, about what presentations or discussions uh, you believe that the board and the public both would benefit from at the twenty twenty-five planning session. Um, it's also an opportunity to get volunteers, um, to assist with development of the next steps as we proceed from now until February. Following conversations that staff, um, have had with trustees over the course of this year, we identified the following topics for your consideration and to spur your conversation and thought processes as we try and develop the agenda for the planning session, or the contours of the agenda, anyway. Um, so the categories, obviously, discipline system, access to justice, diversity, equity, inclusion, admissions, and governance. Um, or maybe more likely govern, governance adjacent, but you'll see that as we get to it. Um, on, um, so following the identification of those topics to, as a way to get this conversation going, we also identified different methods that could be used in order for the board to engage on those various topics. Um, you'll see in the next, uh, series of slides, we sort of put together those topics and these methods and came up with some, um, uh, suggestions, again, uh, based on conversations that we've had largely, um, with trustees over the course of the year, uh, as well as some emerging issues, um, that, um, that staff had identified. This is intended to start a discussion, um, and, um, identify what the board believes really are the most important things. I will mention before I start going into, uh, the possibilities um, that we'd identified, which are also set forth in the staff report that you received, um, that the list of possibilities, um, that, uh, that you will see me, see me present today are more than we can do in a single planning session. Um, so I want you to keep that in mind. Um, ultimately, um, if there are topics that you, that we think we can't sort of handle all in one day, there is nothing that would prevent us from continuing in May through any of those remaining topics, uh, if they're important, uh, for the board to consider. Um, so, starting with the discipline system, um, one idea that, uh, that we have heard, and this frankly came from the chair, we heard the chair say uh, repeatedly, um, that we, it's time to have another discipline day. So what is he talking about for the newer board members? Um, in the past, we, um, we held something that we colloquially refer to as discipline day. This was a minimum of half day, potentially a full day, um, uh, where we walk trustees through O C T C's different units and the processes that happen in those units. So case comes into intake, what's intake, what happens there? Enforcement, going through all of that. Uh, also had presentations from probation, the client security fund, that lawyer assistance program, just to give trustees an understanding of, of what happened in, what happens in those offices. Um, and with, uh, customers and the public who come through those offices. And then there was a visit to the State Bar Court, a physical visit to the State Bar Court, uh, where trustees would sit with, uh, the presiding judge and the court, and the court clerk, among others. Um, what we're suggesting here, in the interest of time, um, as a possibility, is doing sort of a modified version of discipline day, maybe something that is two hours in nature. Um, and, um, thinking that, um, that sort of a, an interesting way to present it and to keep the board engaged um, would be to walk through the process by looking at specific cases. Um, so you could, um, you could have this through, um, the perspective of the complainants and the, um, and the lawyers, the complainants who filed these complaints and the lawyers who are under investigation. Uh, this is a good way to really bring a lens of the impact of the public into the planning session. And so that was one suggestion, um, uh, dealing with discipline. And now I'm at a, I have a conundrum here. I can go through all of the topics and the way that, you know, we have, the things we've identified as possible approaches, or we can stop, um, at the end of each section, and I can get input from the board on, do we want to do something on this topic? Do we want to do something like what we, what staff has put here on the slide? Um, uh, or we could sort of go through everything and then circle back and, um, get, get the board's input on the, the entirety of the agenda.
I think let's take it in smaller chunks, so that's my, my preference.
Okay, so then let's talk about, um, the discipline system and, um, your thoughts. Um, and Mr. Chair, again, this largely, this idea largely emanated from comments that you have made at past meetings about the, um, your desire to revisit the discipline day, um, and make sure that the trustees are, um, sort of have more sort of working knowledge of how the process works and how it impacts, uh, the public and the lawyers.
Absolutely. I think, you know, we've had significant, uh, board turnover since the last time we had such an in-depth dive, a personal dive into the, um, into the discipline system. So, uh, because the majority of our decisions relate to how O C T C runs these rules, um, how they're implemented, I think it, it really behooves us as, uh, overseer, overseers of the system to understand, uh, the pressures that our employees are under and implement, you know, implementing these, uh, changes, uh, see how these changes affect their day-to-day life, and then, um, not only will it allow us, I think, to be, uh, better, uh, overseers of the system, but also be able to communicate with our stakeholders in an effective way, uh, and just have a, a deeper understanding of, of, uh, the state bar's needs and just how dedicated our employees are. So that's, those are a couple of reasons why I, uh, have been pushing for this. I'm sorry, with the way my screen's set up, I can't tell if anybody else is raising their hand. Any questions or comments on this aspect? Trustee Tony?
Um, you know, I like this, and I like that we're talking about this. It would help me a lot if I had an idea of when in February we were meeting, so I could like, you know, block off the time and change all my appointments.
That was reflected in the earlier item for the meeting schedule for next year, so the planning session takes part, I believe it was, or were the dates not in that item? I can't remember.
I don't believe the dates from the item. I think we had been talking about that February date being, what, around the twenty, twentieth, twenty-first?
Yes, that's, that's correct, twentieth and twenty-first.
Thank you.
All right.
Um, so is that a general thumbs up that folks want us to do a discipline, modified discipline day in this kind of format for the meetings? Um, uh, okay, so moving on then, let's look at the access to justice topic. In the area of access to justice, staff identified a subject that we believe, believe is both timely and likely to result in a very lively discussion. Um, and that topic is consideration of whether to re-engage on the issue of paraprofessionals. As the staff report describes, statute places a restriction on the state bar until January one, twenty twenty-five, from exploring licensing non-attorneys as paraprofessionals. With the lifting of that moratorium as of January one, we thought it appropriate for the board to formally weigh in, to formally debate the next steps. What does the bo, board think that we should do on this? Um, for newer trustees, the staff report provides some brief, beef, brief background on, um, 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 and links, brief background on the paraprofessional, uh, idea and links to the efforts of the state bar engaged in between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two to explore options to increase access to justice through licensing of non-lawyers who satisfy defined educational requirements and defined experiential requirements, um, to engage in certain acts that, under the law today, would not be permitted, because they would be the unauthorized practice of law. So as we were thinking about how the board might want to consider this item, um, we've, we saw it as a sort of part of a continuum of efforts. Um, and, um, we are slated to re, release our twenty twenty-five, uh, Justice Gap Study, um, in, uh, probably early February, uh, before the, the board meeting. Um, and so we thought we could set the context, um, for, uh, this discussion by going through the, by having a presentation on the Justice Gap Study, which is exploring the gap between the supply and demand for civil legal services in California. Uh, then, uh, an idea would be to update the board, and this is something that we had done several years ago when we first launched into the paraprofessional, um, uh, working group, but to update the board on what's going on across the nation um, with regard to allowing non-attorneys to perform certain functions, what other states are allowing in this regard. Uh, then, um, we would, we are, are suggesting that we could have a presentation from, um, the, uh, presentation of a proposal that's currently being considered by legal services in California, and that's a community justice worker model. Um, that model is described in, uh, in the staff report or Um, that model is described in uh in the staff report, or the concept of community justice workers is described in the staff report. All of those discussions, justice gap study, the um uh what's going on across the nation, uh the legal aid uh providers, recommendations on community justice workers um would uh set the stage um for a uh roundtable with key stakeholders. And as board members who were around in twenty twenty two recall, there were a lot of dissenting voices when the state bar was exploring the licensing of paraprofessionals, and this is ultimately what led to this, the statutory language that set the um the restriction on the bar from adopting or considering anything on paraprofessionals through twenty twenty five. And so it seems that it might be important for the board to hear hear those perspectives in particular from the dissenting voices um to help determine what the next steps would be. And so this is one approach or a multifaceted approach, frankly, um for the board to consider what a next step on um on access to justice, specifically in the area of paraprofessionals might be, how the work board wants to engage, if the board wants to engage, whether this is appropriate, whether we should really partner with the legal aid uh community um and work on community justice worker issues, and really sort of thi- thinking about making an affirmative decision on what we're going to do uh in this area, which caused some great controversy in uh twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three.
All right, trustee Huser.
I agree that this is a very controversial issue and a good one to discuss if that time period is ending. So I think it's a great topic to include on the agenda. It's a very important topic to a lot of people. Um, and so I'm all for it.
Right, trustee Tony.
You're muted.
Sorry about that. I I I'd like to um argue caution on this one. I mean, for the legislature to be so strongly against this that they actually enacted a statute prohibiting the state bar from working on this? That's a, that's what I call a pretty mighty strong signaling, right? Um, and um just because it happens to expire doesn't mean that the positions have changed. But I would advise that we put this one off until we've talked to the uh judiciary committees in particular, quite frankly, um at both the assembly and senate, and see if their position has changed. Simply because the uh deadline in a statute has expired does not automatically mean that their position has changed. Um, so I would very much um suggest that why why spend our time discussing something that the legislature is still not interested? I don't know what that answer is. I'm not pretending like I know. But the thing that I do know is that in twenty twenty two, they passed a statute uh placing it off limits. That part I know.
And I do want to be clear. Staff is not advocating any particular outcome of that discussion. Um, so uh so it really is, the state bar spent a considerable amount of time on the paraprofessional working group. Uh, it, our perspective was, it seemed like just sort of staying silent on it, not raising it to the board um was probably, you know, uh questionable. And so we thought, the reason we suggested this was we thought the board wanted to make an affirmative decision one way or the other um on on this issue, but staff is one hundred percent not pushing toward a particular outcome on that, and I just wanted to be crystal clear about that.
Well, I I would just add, there's a lot of suspicion, Mark, um by some of these um stakeholders who have advocated against this reform about what we're gonna do come January one. So that um adds to Donna's point about why I think it's important that we proactively address it. And um as has been mentioned, we intend to invite them to the table, not only invite them to the table, but ask them to facilitate the conversations. You can hear directly from consumer attorneys, the Defense Bar, Los Angeles County Bar Association, the the legal services uh community, the key organizations that were very against this as to what their views are on what the state bar should do now that the statute has expired. I expect you will hear, you should not do anything other than advance this community justice workers proposal, which is going to come to you anyway. It's being worked up separately outside of the state bar. Um, but I think we'd be remiss in not in staying silent on it, and and our view is that we're structuring this in a way to to reflect the fact that the board is genuinely interested in engaging with those who've been on the other side of the issue.
All right, trustee Huser.
I think trustee Tony's um admonition to to get some, if we're gonna go at this proactively, but get some guidance about how strongly the judiciary committees feel about this is a is a great suggestion. I highly support that.
All right, so just from a practical standpoint, is that something that, Donna, you believe we can get a somewhat of a reading on? Um, and then, you know, we have a couple of specially set meetings coming up, or at least you can work with uh board leadership on some of those other, so some of those issues, whether or not this is something that we actually do, like what would be the best form for that?
Yeah, I I can certainly um uh get that input, and I have done some preliminary outreach to some of the um the folks who were dissenters on this in the past um as Leo, the sort of groups that Leo was mentioning. Um, uh, and I have had some outreach to legislature, but have not worked with with both committees on this. And so that's certainly something I can do. Um, but here's what I suggest, because as I mentioned at the outset, um if perchance the um the board happens to be enthusiastic about um the whole list of of uh possible ideas, possible approaches for this agenda, um for the planning session agenda that are set forth um in this presentation and the staff report, and if the board is excited about all of them, it's too much to do in one day. So, um, so what ultimately we were gonna ask the board to do is give us a couple of volunteers um for a couple of the key segments here. And um, and so if i- and so then we can make, I, we can make decisions. Those board volunteers, I would be providing the staff support um to them. And if the answer on this one is the legislature is saying that you should not even have this discussion, then the board members that have volunteered to work on this would suggest but so we're gonna pull that and that'll free up space on your agenda. So that's one, that's one way to do it.
All right, that makes sense. All right, anything else on this topic before we go on to the next? Oh, got trustee Goodroom.
Um, I was gonna say I support Ms. Hershkowitz's uh proposal there, and I'm happy to volunteer myself for whatever would be appropriate at the chair's uh discretion. Uh, I think this is a very controversial topic. Um, but I don't see what's wrong with just listening to people at this point. Um, so uh that's, that's where I sit on it. Thanks.
All right, um, Donna, any further direction on this topic?
Nope, um I'm gonna circle back at the end to ask for volunteers on a couple of these sections, though. Um, so moving on to diversity, equity, and inclusion, um we've identified two ideas to spur discussion today. Um, first would be a presentation of the disparities in the discipline system report um that you've heard about several times today, so I'm not gonna go into what that is. Um, uh, but uh having this as a planning session will allow the boards, based on the the findings of the report, to identify further activities that need to be undertaken to address any findings uh at any of the findings. The um second idea uh relates to the statutory requirement that we develop and submit biannually, a plan to meet the goals of enhancing access, fairness, and diversity in the legal profession, and elimination of bias, il- elimination of bias in the practice of law. Our next plan, our next two-year plan, is due to the legislature March thirtieth of twenty twenty five. And so uh the planning session could be a good opportunity to spend some time talking about the recommendations that are that are included, going to be included in that report um and get board direction on those recommendations and next steps related to those recommendations.
All right. Any thoughts or comments on this uh topic? Yes, trustee uh Good versus Harris.
Great idea. I'm totally in support of this.
All right. Seeing no other comments, any other direction on this, Donna?
So, moving on then, um in the area of admissions, uh, one, one of our trustees in particular um has raised at several board meetings questions about how to address critical funding needs in the admissions work at the state bar. Um, that trustee has talked about exploring public-private partnerships to help meet our funding needs. Um, uh, you just heard from Ms. Grammy about the bar exam development efforts that we are about to undergo. Um, so it could be that public-private partnerships would wa- be a way to help meet funding needs to uh to develop the bar exam, uh possibly uh to strengthen the accreditation work um that the state bar does, or something else in um the admissions area. Um, but the the budget can continues to be uh an area of concern, and this is, might be a a particularly a good um subject matter within the bar uh to engage um in getting some funding.
And trustee Stevens just volunteered for that committee by uh raising his hand. All right, uh, no, jokes. All right, um, any questions or comments on this area? That's trustee Tony.
Um, you know, I think we um, I'm I'm open to having this kind of discussion. I think we have to be very careful about what a public-private partnership is and how to make sure that there are parameters that um avoid um either material or perceived conflicts of interest um in terms of who the funds um come from. Um, I just think we have to be very, very careful about that. Um, so, you know, um, you know, with that in mind, I I certainly have no um no objection to it. I will say that one of the things I was hoping to see um um and maybe, do do you have more, uh Donna, that I haven't seen yet in terms?
I have one more slide.
Okay, let's do that, and then I'll bring up uh my other uh question or issue.
Um, and this is my governance or governance adjacent um uh uh part of the planning session suggestion. Um, uh, this might be an opportunity for some training for trustees, conflicts of interest, ethics uh training, uh communications training, or um any other type of training that the the board thought appropriate. And that's my last substantive slide.
Right, any comments on this? Yes, trustee Tony.
Yeah, um, I very much support the uh conflicts of interest, um ethics training. Um, it'll be the first one we've done in person, and um I think it's far superior to doing that little, uh, I don't know what it is, some, something online, a a conflicts online little module, which I found to be terribly wanting because you couldn't ask questions. Um, it was just a a one-way street. And uh they gave you little quizzes, but po- part of conflicts of interest is a matter of judgment and a matter of nuance. And I think we would all benefit from the what-if questions um that we sometimes find ourselves in. And um, so anyway, um I'm very pleased to see that and very much uh support that being part of what we do in February. Thank you.
If I, if I may?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
I, yeah, just as a reminder, we did do a training in person during the board meeting in January of this year. Um, we had invited the F P P C representative to help um to conduct the Form seven hundred Conflict of Interest Code um training, and then we also had um Brady doer do a very um specific to the state bar and Board of Trustees Conflict of Interest Training. And we were thinking for um this planning session that we will do a similar type of um a training, maybe a little bit more uh streamlined, given how detailed the last training was.
Thank you for the reminder.
So with that, um, if, if those are the topics that you would like further exploration of, then um I'm going to ask for a volunteer or two um for probably each of these. Um, so, starting with the discipline system, uh Chair Stallings, that seems to be right up your alley.
Yeah, I'm happy to uh to take that on. I'm also wanna leave it open to other trustees who, you know, might wanna learn more about the process, and just thinking about, um, you know, me coming up as a younger trustee, I think one of the things that really had an impact on me was working on planning session items. Um, I really learned um those those areas, so I don't wanna preclude anybody else who um you know, who wants to be involved in that, so I will, I will do whatever, I'll volunteer for whatever, but also wanna leave it open to uh other trustees.
Being that.
Apparently, uh we, and we have a, we have a large cadre who are not present, so we can definitely volunteer them.
Frank, I said, uh, an alternative, I I was just thinking for the two training items. Um, because I, uh, you and Jose, we meet weekly, Donna could join those meetings, maybe um it would be efficient to have you and Jose be the points for the training items, and we bring in the other uh board members for the more substantive aspects of the planning session.
Yeah, I like that. Jose, are you good with that?
Wait, okay.
Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
I think Sarah volunteered for access.
Yep. So for access, we'll put Sarah Good. Anyone else? Trustee Tony, did you wanna also participate on in that discussion?
The um, no, I, I, like I said, I think it's a mistake to have that discussion, so not really.
Um, next was the um diversity, equity, and inclusion uh presentation on the disparities or and uh potentially and the um final diversity plan.
I'd rather do that, Donna, honestly.
That, that was my assumption, actually, trustee Good.
And I'd rather have someone else do the other one, given I view that as very controversial.
And and just to be clear in terms of doing the other one, um, I think what what we're talking, what's happened in the past, what trustee Stallings is referring to, is we just work with a board member to build out the concept. So, as Donna mentioned, um part of this will involve explicit checking in with the um ledge staff um on this idea overall, so the board liaisons to this topic may say, based on that feedback, we shouldn't do it at all, or based on that feedback, we're fine, and then how it will bounce ideas off of you if we did go forward about how to structure the hour to discussion, that's what it means. It doesn't mean you're kind of leading anything during the um the board meeting, so I just wanted to be clear on what, what, what it is we're actually asking for here, just to help shape it. What it is we're actually asking for here, just to help shape it. But if we don't have any volunteers, we could, uh you know, I, I know where to find Brandon and Jose every Wednesday at noon.
Ooh, that's a threat.
We could, so yeah, we, or, or uh we can fill, fill in the blank on that one later, certainly. Um. Uh trustee Stevens?
I don't know that I actually have the time to be helpful with it, but I will make the observation that. The LRIS uh folks who spoke this morning are talking about, right, the. The decline in people using the referral service, and, and I do think. From a public perspective and protection of the public perspective. We're gonna have to start talking about offering alternatives to lawyers. In order to give people meaningful access to the justice system. I mean, already seventy percent of people going through family law proceedings, seventy percent are unrepresented. And that number is increasing. And so i- in my view, and I, I'm. Mindful of the legislature's admonitions. It's at least something we need to be talking about, because downline it is going to. Have a very direct impact on the public that we are meant to serve.
I, I think.
Also, trustee Grande.
Um, I'm like, I don't know if I'm gonna regret this, but I'll volunteer to. For that.
For access one, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, famous last words.
Um uh Chair Stallings, I would like to um uh recommend that trustees Barahona and. They are public-private partnership liaisons to the board, take on this, this particular funding panel.
Absolutely.
And that's the end then, cuz we've got the training. So, perfect, I've got. Volunteers, and uh it looks like, and then, and part of this, again, we will figure out um. Uh what the time, which ones of these will ultimately go forward. Um and then whether or not that, that they can all be presented in one day, or if we need to trail something over. Um uh if we do need to trail something over, we uh preliminary discussions that Leah and I had. Uh were that um the public-private partnership discussion, as it relates um to funding for admissions, might be the one. That make, that, that is less time sensitive.
Sounds good.
And with that, I thank you for your input.
All right, thank you, Donna, for working on this. I really look forward to the planning sessions. I think we have really, really good discussions as a board. And it really sets the tenor for the year, so I'm really excited about this uh upcoming meeting. Okay, let's go to, we have a little bit of time left before five o'clock. Like to see if we get through a couple more items. Uh six point four is a discussion, or I'm sorry, six point five is the proposed amendments to Rule two point two, two point one one. Two point one six, two point seven one, uh and we have Steve Moad presenting on this. Steve. Bill, there he is. All right, and Steve, this is a return from public comment and a request for, for adoption, correct?
It, it is, and uh thank you for having me back. Uh hope you're not sick of me yet. Uh this item is a request uh to update rules of the State Bar. Consistent with statutory changes in the fee bill to allow the change of the renewal cycle from December through February. To February through March. Uh there are four rules impacted. Two point two deals with the attorney reporting deadline, two point one one pertains to the annual fees due date, two point one six. Addresses waivers of annual fees uh and the timing for that, and two point seven one deals with MCL-E. Uh there is also a specific recommendation that would exempt each MCL-E compliance group. From a single thirty-six month compliance period, and instead substitute a single thirty-eight month compliance period for each group. And that is simply to allow a transition to the new reporting date.
And do you wanna explain, Steve, why this is on discussion, not consent?
Uh, that, actually, that, that's a great question. Um.
I think it's because um. Uh. Yeah, when we discuss it, didn't we make a minor change, because it does not have to go to the Supreme Court? There's no Supreme Court rule change needed?
Uh yes, we, uh we were initially proposing, uh thank you, Leah, uh then we were initially proposing that nine point three one of the rules of court. Uh needed to be amended uh it to allow for this change. Uh but we determined that that may not be necessary for this, what is essentially a one-time thing. And because Rule nine point three one does allow for the board to allow exemptions. Uh that, that we could approach it in this way. Uh and obviate the need to go to the Supreme Court to change that rule for, for this single time.
So that change triggered it to go on discussion, just wanting to explain the method to our madness.
Right. Great. Any questions for Steve? Any comments? That's not, I have a motion in a second.
I'll move it.
All right, so we have a, first by trustee Cisneros, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Grande. All right, I have a uh roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Barahona, not present, Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Thank you. Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
User?
Aye.
So well?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo, not present, Stallings?
Aye.
Nine eyes, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Steve. All right, our last agenda item, and let me just do a time check here, because I'm at a uh office. Share site, and I get kicked out of here at five. So. RSL, do you think you can get through this item in three minutes, or should we come back tomorrow?
Was that question for me? Sorry, I just joined. Yes, yes, I can. I only have two slides, and I will get through it quickly.
All right, I don't wanna, I don't wanna quash robust discussion, but that's my uh.
I, I'm fine with it if, if, if the board is, is doing with.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, um I'm gonna share my screen. Um. Really, wait, um. So please let me know when you see it. And hopefully.
We can see it.
Perfect. There we go. So I'm gonna just go through uh really quickly the uh revenue, and then followed by expense highlights of our quarter three financial statement results. Um uh as I normally do, uh you know, bar-wide, we can see that the revenue is uh about three hundred fifty-six million, which is. Uh a little bit over five million dollars over budget, which is a good thing. Um and then the variances are discussed, or, or the variances are in, in the funds that you see listed here. So only highlight um the funds that tend to have the largest variances, the first one being the general fund. Um. Excuse me, the general fund, which has uh did, or actual revenues higher by almost three million, a little bit over three million compared to budget. And that's really mostly due to the uh late C-top fees that um we've earned. Um this is helping to uh. This is helping with the shortfall that we've continued to see quarter-over-quarter on the mandatory fees. Um so thankfully, we have, we have that additional revenue that has helped uh. Uh bridge that shortfall. Mandatory fees is, is expected to be below budget, um probably by around six hundred thousand uh through the end of the year. Um which is the biggest source of funding for the general fund. Um the next fund, the grants fund, as you can see, it's slightly below budget by just over a million. And this is just because there was reduced funding in the Care Core Grant. And the grant fund uh just holds multiple uh different grants in the Care Core Grant, specifically, I didn't get as much funding. Um that's as uh we expected. Um admissions fund is also doing well, it's above budget uh revenue-wise by about a million and a half. And that's really just to more applicants who sat for the February and July bar exams. I'm sorry, I. Too quickly. Um the, yeah, it, July and exam, more applicants sat, as well as we also have more fees from. Uh moral character determination, lawsuits and attorney registration fees. Um and then the other funds uh is also above budget by one point seven million, and that's really just uh due to settlement donations in the Justice Cap Fund. Moving on to the operating expenses bar-wide, we are below budget. As you can see, most of the funds are actually below budget um on the expenses. Uh bar-wide, it's about eight point three million below budget. Um starting off with the general fund, which makes up most of the variance. Uh we just have savings primarily in professional services, um personal costs, IT equipment and building operations. Um and the grants fund, uh it's slightly below budget uh only by three hundred thousand, but that's just. Um really mainly savings from vacancies and underspending, and a different grant called the Axis Less, Axis Lex Grant that didn't get funded. So we didn't have expenditures associated with it. Um admissions fund is also below budget. Uh we did have a lot of savings from services. Um and then exam-related expenses from using our State Bar uh facilities and using volunteers as contractors that helped uh have. Realize savings for uh the exam-related expenses. Um client's credit fund continues to be below budget, and that's really just mainly due to fewer applications that have been eligible for payment. Um and last but not least, the other funds on the expense side is also below budget, slightly by three hundred thousand, and that's just really. Mainly from a lawyer's assistant program um and the elimination of bias on service that has been underspent slightly. Um and that's, in a nutshell, uh the quarter three results, if anybody has any questions. Happy to answer.
But any questions?
I move to adopt.
All right, can I have a second?
Second.
First by trustee Tony, second by trustee Huser. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
I'm sorry. Barahona, not present, Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
User?
Aye.
So well?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo, not present, Stallings?
Aye.
Nine eyes, zero nays, motion carries.
All right, thank you, Ms. Montoya Chico. All right, this concludes a discussion of all open session items. Uh the board will move into closed session tomorrow at nine AM. Pursuant to Government Code Section one, 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 two, six, sub A, and one, 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 two, six, sub C, sub seventeen. Hope everybody has a great evening, and we'll see you tomorrow, closed session. You'll get a unique uh link for that sometime tomorrow before the board meeting. All right. There's nothing else, we'll see you guys tomorrow.
Night, everybody.
Thank you.